It's tough because they're very elusive.
They are.
Good evening and welcome to the San Bernardino City Council meeting in 2015-2013. The flowers they always supply for our meetings. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Here.
Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
And Mr. Riekel, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Councilmember Ivera will not join us this evening. He zaps him with notice. And announcements, I just want to congratulate Lynn Berliner and the San Bruno Giants Pee-wee Baseball Team in their league championship and especially Lynn for his first championship in 41 years. Congratulations. Also, just to let you know, I intended, went down Sunday, came back yesterday, the United States Conference of Mayors Convention in Las Vegas. I was asked to speak and tell our story regarding pipeline issues and pipeline safety to a subcommittee, chaired by myself actually, and Mayor Ed Palowski of Allentown, Pennsylvania. So we gave a little talk and talked to, actually attending with us was the head council for FIMSA, the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Administration from Washington, DC. So we're trying to do something nationwide to make mayors more aware of what's underground. So I'll keep you posted on that. Presentations, there aren't any presentations this evening. Review of the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? I would like to pull on the consent calendar, item D for, there's no action, I'm sorry. What did I do? Approval of the minutes of the city council meeting, closed session of June 11th, 2013, the city council meeting of June 11th, 2013, a special study session of June 6th and June 10th, 2013. There are no errors, corrections, omissions I'd like to have them approve this minute. Under consent calendar, I would like to pull, once again, item 7D with no action this evening, and we're going to get a further update on that particular item in another city council meeting in the future, very shortly. Other than that, let me see. Any other issues with the consent calendar or action by the council?
Moved to approve.
Motion second on the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, public hearings, we have a public hearing this evening. Hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the city manager's recommended 2013-14 general fund, enterprise funds, internal service funds, and special revenue funds budget. Approving the city's appropriations limit of $34,397,677 for fiscal year 2013-2014, the GAN limit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're pleased to present for your proposed action, the fiscal year 13-14 general fund, special revenue, and enterprise funds budgets. The budgets were reviewed by you in two study session meetings earlier this month, and the, each of the departments presented the information in the budget in some amount of detail so that the city council has had an opportunity to review this information and to ask of staff any questions that may have arisen. Unfortunately, we did receive some questions after the study sessions were completed and have not yet had an opportunity to provide thorough written, thorough review of those questions and answers to the city council. So that our act, our interest tonight is to present this budget for your consideration to approve with the understanding that there has been a request for some additional information, and that information will be forthcoming. The city council, therefore, I'm reminding you of the obvious, which is that the city council retains the authority to amend the budget at any time. And specifically during, at the close of each quarter of the fiscal year, we provide an update on the budget status, both revenues and expenditures, and we provide a formal opportunity for the city council to make adjustments to the budget as may be warranted based on current financial trends or conditions. So that that would be an easy and convenient time for you to consider any changes that might arise as a result of your, any further review of issues of interest to the city council. So I just wanted to remind you of that. We're going to give you a very short presentation tonight primarily for the public record that hits what I hope will be the highlights of the review that the city council is, has already completed and of the budget itself. Some of the things that shaped our understanding of the city's financial condition and the issues that it is dealing with in the coming year. So first, I'd like to start with a very quick review of fiscal year 12-13 that will close at the end of this week, and just highlight a couple of the most, or a few of the most significant accomplishments in the work program that was achieved as a result of your last year's budget authorization. First, and we look forward to the impact that this will have on the future growth and development of the city of San Bruno, is the approval of the transient corridors plan. As a council is aware, this is an exciting opportunity to transform and to situate the future of the downtown and the business corridors in our community, and we look forward to implementation of that plan over the next several years. We completed another and hopefully final step in the exciting development of the crossing site, where we have selected and are continuing negotiations with the developer for the final leg of that project, which is a hotel that we hope will meet the community's interests and need for high-quality meeting space so that we don't have to go out of town when we want to have a larger-scale meeting. Internally, the city completed negotiation with all six of our bargaining units. For this past year, the majority of the concessions that were made by bargaining units over the last half a dozen years have largely been removed as a result of some limited improvement in the city's economic situation. And we continued some of the initiatives that have been important to the city's financial stability and service delivery, including the consolidation at the administrative level of our fire department with the adjacent cities of Millbrae, Hillsborough, and Burlingame. We were pleased with the city council's approval of a refinancing of a, an obligation that the city has been paying on to PERS, the retirement fund that serves all of the city's employees. That was significant because it achieved a very large dollar value of savings. This is the type of thing that goes somewhat unnoticed sometimes, but by issuing the pension obligation bonds under the administrative direction of our finance director, Kim Duran, we were successful in achieving a $3.1 million savings over the life of those bonds. The city experienced, as all other cities in the state of California, the implementation of the new Employee Pension Reform Act that is intended over the long term, and unfortunately over the very long term, to contain escalating pension costs for municipalities just like ours. And perhaps most importantly, the city council should be credited with both continuation of your very sound conservative fiscal policy, but the great opportunity to take a hard look at the city's reserve funds and the city's reserve policy. Not only did you update the reserve policy, but you established some additional dedicated reserve funds that allow the city a little bit more certainty than we've been able to accomplish over the past several years financially, to plan for, prepare, and hopefully be able to weather financial challenges that may impact us further down the road. Turning to the coming fiscal year, fiscal 13-14, we are very, very pleased to present for the first time in a very long time, a budget that is balanced without the need for new reductions or the use, the proposed use of one-time funds. This budget, however pleased we are with that new set of circumstances, it needs to be mentioned, and we all need to remember, that this budget continues the city council's conservative fiscal policy of containing costs at the lowest possible level necessary to maintain the delivery of basic services. We continue to be challenged with competing demands for what remain fairly limited resources, and many of the prior-year reductions may remain fully in place, again, consistent with city council policy. I'm pleased also to note, and would encourage members of the public to take a look at our budget, although the format of it looks, in many cases, largely the same as it has in previous years, we work very hard every year to try and make a presentation that is both easily understandable and usable both by our staff, by the city council, other agencies, but importantly, by members of the public who are interested in and need to understand how we do business, what business we're doing, and how we do it. Those changes, we hope, will make the budget both easier and more user-friendly to understand what can be complicated but important information. In the financial area, the budget is built around a number of continuing issues, and I just want to highlight a few of them before turning the presentation over to our finance director to walk through the numbers with you. The city council should be reminded that the bargaining unit agreements that we entered during the fiscal year 12-13 all include a salary re-opener to occur in October of 2013. This budget does not include set-aside funds that are earmarked in any manner for a financial impact of that re-opener. The, and that is largely because those, the results of that re-opener cannot be anticipated or predicted in any way at the current time. The budget continues a reliance on the funding that is coming into the city's general fund for all of those activities related to and arising from the 2010 tragic explosion and fire in the Crestmore neighborhood. Funding is provided by the trust fund set up by the city and PG&E a couple of years ago to cover the, all of those costs. So those activities, as they're delineated in the budget, are being covered by that trust fund. City continues to be impacted by the loss of redevelopment a year and a half ago. While we, like other cities in our state, have adjusted to the new reality, and we have proceeded with and fulfilled all of the city's obligations under the terms of the new redevelopment requirements, turning over our fund balance, et cetera, we continue to be concerned and impacted by the loss of a very dynamic tool to incentivize and encourage and achieve productive economic development in our community. I mentioned previously that the city council wisely utilized a limited improvement in the city's revenue situation to implement new reserve funds and to establish a strong reserve policy. We look forward to the opportunity this year to continue that important work effort and to re-engage the city council, probably in the, in the time period of the first quarter's trend analysis, to look back at that policy and to make thoughtful consideration of how we might want to continue that good work. Next, we've talked with the city council in the study sessions about the development of a five-year fiscal policy and plan, and we look forward to engaging the city council both in that work effort as well as in the companion discussion about bigger picture, longer-term city council goals and objectives. Finally, I have one small item that I would like to bring to the council's attention that has not yet been incorporated into the budget, but, which requires a bit further evaluation and will be the subject of a future conversation with the city council either at the first quarter or the mid-year review, and that is the completion of the one-year maintenance period on 11 El Camino and San Bruno Avenue median islands that have recently been renovated over the past approximately 15 months. Those islands will come on to city maintenance in August and January of this coming year, and as we have mentioned to the city council many times over the, over the past number of years, we do anticipate that there may be a need for consideration of additional resources in order to make sure that those medians are maintained in an acceptable condition that is consistent with the investment that we've made in assuring that this is, that our major corridors are attractive not only to traffic, but to the overall identity of the community. So that is an issue that will be coming back to the city council in the next several months. With that, I'm going to ask Kim to give you a quick overview of the financial aspects of this budget, and then we will look forward to your additional comment and your actions.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Just to highlight some of the items that we discussed at the study sessions, starting off with the general fund and looking at the revenue situation, this is a summary, behind me is a summary of the proposed revenues for 2013-14 and a comparison to the current year 2012-13 amended budget and the estimated actuals. And as you can see, the revenues, overall bottom-line revenues in the general fund are estimated to increase by about 4% in 2013-14, and this is primarily being driven by an increase in the city's taxes category, which I'll go into a bit more detail in just a moment. And then you can see in some other categories, some declines that are offsetting that growth, and that's a signal of sort of the continuing lull in the economy in certain areas, low interest rates and so forth, that are still not quite up to where they've been historically. So while we are seeing some increases in many of our taxes categories, those are being offset by some other more stagnant revenue sources. Some of those highlights and what are driving those revenue changes, the first, as the city manager mentioned, is we are now receiving what is being referred to as redevelopment boomerang funds. These are the funds that the city now receives as unrestricted property tax. So we used to receive tax increment through the redevelopment agency. We no longer receive that tax increment. It's now divvied up amongst all the taxing entities, and so we receive a share, our share is about 14% of what used to be that tax increment, and that comes to the city on an annual basis. And so for 2013-14, we're estimating that revenue to be about $750,000. And while that's unrestricted general fund revenue, do keep in mind that that is replacing what we used to receive approximately $9 million of tax increment to the redevelopment agency to fund those types of initiatives, is now being replaced by $750,000 of property tax. So some perspective to offset that positive. On the other tax categories, sales tax and transient occupancy tax and business tax are all seen continuing growth. Sales tax continues to see some pretty strong improvement. We are estimating about a 7% increase next year. And transient occupancy tax and business tax, both seen some steady growth, primarily being driven by the addition of some more businesses here in San Bruno, locating here in San Bruno. We have some major corporations that have located within the city in the last year or two that have brought in increased business travel, so it's having a double impact of improving our TOT situation as well as our business tax. As I mentioned earlier, while there are these positives in our taxes category, we continue to see some all-time lows. Interest rates, as an example, continue to remain at historic lows, and so our earnings on our investments continue to be low, as well as we lost the revenue that the city was once receiving from the redevelopment agency. You might recall that this city had loaned just over $3 million to the redevelopment agency and was receiving interest on that $3 million advance. With the elimination of redevelopment, that interest goes away. So those are some impacts that we're seeing. We're also continuing to see declines in the vehicle license fee category, another unintended impact resulting from the loss of redevelopment that's still continuing to be evaluated by the county. And also, another item impacting the 2013-14 revenues is just a decrease in building, what I would refer to as base building permit activity. These are just the typical home remodels and renovations of existing structures. We had estimated that some growth during the current year, however, we haven't achieved that growth yet, so we included a conservative number for 2013-14. On that note, I would add that the budget for building revenues does not include any one-time building revenues that might be anticipated next year. On the expenditure side, we are seeing approximately a $900,000 increase in the base budget, excuse me, from the current year amended budget to the 2013-14 proposed budget. And that $900,000 increase amounts to about a 2.7% overall increase in expenditures. And as we discussed at the study session, we looked at what that means and how that compares over the long term, last six years, in comparison to our overall budget six years ago, and where we are today in comparison to CPI. And at 2.7%, even with that jump of $900,000, we are still well below the amount of where we would be had our budget just increased by a basic CPI, 2.5% CPI, over the last several years. So over the, over the last six years, we've managed to contain our costs despite those increases, pension increases, and so forth. Some of the highlights of what's driving those increases, what I would consider in many cases, increases in just base operating costs. We've included the cost of the November 2013 election in the proposed budget. We have some increases in county service charges in the police department. There's an increase, a proposed increase in fire overtime and shared services costs, which is being offset partially by incoming revenues. We have basic wage increases that result from employee step increases that are a part of every budget cycle that account for about $200,000. PERS increases, we were managed to refund the outstanding side fund payment for the safety group. However, regular base miscellaneous PERS increases continue to go up, and so that accounted for about $95,000. We had some increases in increased costs in the recreation department, part-time salaries and contract class costs that result in about $162,000 of increased costs with an offset of $200,000 in revenue. And finally, as I've mentioned before, the city's liability premium has increased over the last two years by about 30% annually, and that impact on the general fund is, amounts to about $70,000. So that is just sort of the highlights of what gets you to that $900,000 increase in the budget next year. In addition to the base budget, the proposed budget included a recommended list of supplemental budget adjustments. And at this time, I'll point out that there was a revised resolution that was placed on the DS prior to the meeting, and the change in that resolution is within the supplementals. The, the resolution that went out with the council packet had a summary list of the supplementals, whereas the revised resolution simply lists out every single one of the proposed supplementals. I'm not going to go into the details of them, however, a few that I'll just mention is the set-aside of $125,000 of the redevelopment boomerang funds within the general fund to set those aside for the development of an economic development plan. There is a proposal to add one police officer in the police department to focus on nuisance complaints. There are some equipment purchases in the fire department, including new turnout lockers and some hoes for the two frontline engines. There are some reclassifications within the planning department, including the reclassification of the former redevelopment and housing manager position to a long-term planning manager position, and some additional funds for the zoning code update, just to name a few. In addition, in the internal service funds, we had the purchase of some additional computer monitors, a reorganization within the central garage, and finally, in the Crestmore fund, the proposal to add a management analyst and an emergency services coordinator to be funded through the Crestmore Trust Fund. Overall, the total supplemental requests net of the associated revenues amounts to $302,000, $204,000 of that being ongoing costs and $97,900 being one-time. Which gets us to the operating surplus before taking into account the supplemental request of $311,000. Taking into account the supplemental budget request of $302,000 leaves us with just a small operating surplus in the proposed budget of $8,500. Moving away from the general fund and just touching upon some of the other funds as part of the budget, in the enterprise funds, we have the water fund with, on the revenue side, a million-dollar increase in revenues as part of the second year of the proposed, or the approved rate increase program last year. On the expenditure side, you can see the operating expenditures have been contained with just a small $22,000 increase in the budget. The remaining $4.4 million set aside for capital improvements in what we discuss with the CIP budget. Similar with wastewater, the proposed rate increase is incorporated into these revenues, so the increase is 1.2 million next year. And the expenditures have increased by $205,000 with the remaining $5 million to be set-aside for use for the capital improvement program. Stormwater, revenues remained consistent from year to year for the most part, small increases amounting from some additional reimbursements, $632,000 in the 2013-14 budget, and expenditures of $613,000, small difference of $18,000. And finally, in the cable department, a $10.5 million revenue budget, which includes a 5% rate increase to go into effect within, in the fall of 2013. And on the expenditure side, $9.9 million of proposed operating expenditures, which leaves just over $694,000 for the fund's debt service payments and the capital improvement Some of the other funds that the council is being asked to approve the budget for this evening include the internal service funds, which include the central garage, building facilities maintenance, the equipment reserve. The equipment reserve, I'll just note, includes a transfer into the reserve fund with just one item at this time being funded with the equipment reserve. The remaining expenditures, proposed expenditures coming out of the equipment reserve will be part of the capital improvement program budget. The technology fund and the self-insurance fund. We have a variety of special revenue funds. The most notable one and the largest one driving these dollars are, is the Crestmore Recovery Fund. The budget includes a operating budget for activities related to the ongoing recovery effort, and so that is included in that. And finally, debt service, we have $4.1 million of debt service payments, which include the city's pension obligation bonds, wastewater certificates of participation, some shared debt with the city of South San Francisco, and the cable fund outstanding lease payments. Very quickly, there's a second resolution that is part of the proposed action this evening related to the approval of the city's 2013-14 GAN limit. And what this essentially says is that the, the city approves the GAN limit and that the taxes collected and the use of those taxes cannot exceed that approved GAN limit. So we are well below that GAN limit. The calculated one for 2013-14 is $34.3 million, and our proceeds of taxes only amounts to $22 million, so we are about $12 million shy of that appropriation limit. So that is just the second resolution that is, the council is being asked to act on this evening. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kim? All right, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anyone in the public like to speak on this matter? All right, got a motion to close. All right, but a motion to close.
So moved.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions, comments, or action?
To the chair.
Irene?
I just want to compliment staff, finance director, all the people, all the department heads. You guys did a fantastic job. I love the new format. It's the budget, it's easier to read and it's easier to find things. So, thank you for all your hard work and yay, we have balanced the budget this year.
Great, agreed.
To the chair.
Rico?
I also appreciated the new format and the way to get the information and data. I found that an improvement and much easier to follow. So, thank you to you, Kim, and to the staff for getting that together and getting that to us. And it is nice to have a balanced budget, so that is a huge positive. The, a couple of things in the general fund that I wanted to ask, is I know in the study sessions, I talked with the police chief in regards to the explorer program and publications. He assured me that that would be, be able to be facilitated with what's currently there. So, I'm satisfied with, of course, his, that comment and word. In the fire department, there were two things. One was the fire abatement I had asked about before, just about the monies that we have allocated to those, which I know are not always great and there might be a huge need in various parts of the community. And I just didn't know if that was identified of how much and maybe where we maybe need to be to help remedy some of that. And then, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I missed one word. The fire, what?
Well, I call it abatement, maybe that's not the right word.
Abatement, oh, fire hazard.
Yeah, the fire hazard.
Thank you.
And then the second thing is, in the fire department also, is with the hose. And city manager updated me and gave me some good feedback. So, with the knowledge of, obviously, we're trying to get... With the knowledge of what we need to get up to a certain level, my question is, should we not, if we're going to be coming back next year and maybe the year prior to continue that, should we not maybe look to increasing the $55,000 so that we are not just getting to a okay level or a satisfactory? Obviously, these are things that we never know when we need and when we need them, we need them. And there were some areas we talked about, the age and deficiency of them. And so, it's just a thought and concern, thinking back, as we come up on our third year. That's one thing concerns me a little bit. So, those are a few of the initial questions in the general fund.
If I could just respond quickly and if you needed more information, I have backup. The, first, on the fire hazard abatement, this is an area of obviously acute importance to not only our community but others similarly situated. And certainly having had the experience that we did, we understand the need to make sure that we're doing what we can. The city has, historically, over the past at least several years, budgeted a limited amount of $30,000 each year. We've done it in various ways, in the operating budget or in the capital budget. It is our expectation that you will see that as a capital project this year. That amount is not included in the operating budget. And we've done that in order to provide us a better means of tracking and making sure that that amount is actually understood and available for the intended purpose. Now that said, $30,000 is probably not a sufficient amount, it is not a sufficient amount, to do what we might reasonably conclude could be done to best address a number of areas in this community where there's a potential for wildland fire, where there's interface between open space and neighborhood areas. That is an issue that our fire department, our code enforcement, and our parks maintenance staffs are actively looking at, at the current time. We intend to have further conversation with you, as I said, during the capital budget review coming up next month and in August. I would say, while this is on the radar screen, it probably has not yet assumed the level of resource that it might warrant, and that's a subject that we need to have further conversation about. It's not forgotten, may not be as well addressed as the city council would prefer. On the issue of the hose, just for the information of the full city council, first of all, we did hear you last year when the city council in a study session a year ago suggested that perhaps a piecemeal approach that we had been pursuing over the last several years to hose replacement with an approximate $7,000 per year allocation to bits of hose replacement, that perhaps that was an approach that extended for too long the life of the hose. And in fact, we did experience a situation recently where hose was, during one of our frequent test exercises, that hose actually, a portion of our hose actually split and was rendered useless. The budget proposal is for, and this is a supplemental request as outlined in the resolution, for $55,000 that will replace the hose, all of the hose, on the two frontline engines. Now, we have three apparatus. The chief is recommending that we equip the two frontline engines with new hose and that that is a proactive and sufficient effort for the current year. One of the benefits, I would say, of the recent, or our continuing efforts, but our more recent initiatives on administrative consolidation among the fire department is that your historic ways of doing business maybe require a little bit of refreshing or relooking. And the chief has advised that, in fact, our incremental method of replacing hose is really not up to standard with the way that other departments are managing hose replacement. And his request for the $55,000 to outfit the two frontline engines is a more, not only a more proactive, but a more reasonable and appropriate way of addressing not only the deficiency that may exist, but also the, something that's a little bit more comparable to the agencies with whom we're consolidating.
Would it, obviously, we'd be coming back maybe next to budget for additional funds for more hose, or updating, I should say?
Yes, during...
Do you have a guess what that ballpark is?
I'm sorry, I don't. I can ask the chief to respond to that.
If I can answer that question, about the same that we're asking for this year. Next year, we'll probably be going for the same amount of, about $55,000.
Okay, and I hear that and I think that is a more proactive approach. And I know it's satisfactory for now. And I guess just with preparedness and always, you know, we can hope, but hope's not a plan. And I just get concerned, again, as I've said, as far as if we know we need another $55,000 next year and they're not, we do have outdated hose based on their life expectancy, then why, and I guess I'm needing to be a little, I don't know, put at ease as why we wouldn't just up that dollar amount so we get ahead of the game, and it's not a game, but to get ahead of the preparedness for whatever might, or unfortunately, could come down the pike.
And if the council elected to go that route, we would go in $25,000 increments. So, the next level up would be another $25,000 if the council elected to do so.
So you were saying if the council chose, you would recommend or suggest 55 plus another 75 in the 2013-2014, is what you're saying?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The current 55 and then an additional $25,000. It would be a $25,000 increment to complete each engine. So, an additional $25,000.
Okay, so the 55 takes care of two, which we have two appar, if I'm understanding, two apparatuses at 51, we have one at 52. So shouldn't we also do the other 25 to make sure we have all three frontline emergency vehicles that are responding with adequate and appropriate hose?
So, engine 51 and engine 52 are the two frontline engines, and then the truck is not included in that. The truck, the truck's not need as much of the hose as the engine is, it doesn't carry the hose.
I appreciate the city manager and the chief's thing. My, again, my mind is still telling me, so is my heart, is that we should increase that at this budget, 2013-14.
Let me make a suggestion. I, let us come back to the city council with a review. We understand the concern. It's obviously something that is, the attention is clearly warranted. What I'd like to do is to ask the chief to give us a, we have some information, we haven't given you documentation that I think it would be useful to you to be able to consider this further, and we can certainly do that at a subsequent meeting.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you. On the enterprise, there are a lot of questions, and while we all know that Rico tends to ask a lot and come up with questions that take some time, and I do understand that and appreciate that. So, without me having the information to, before me to review it or go over it, I'm, at this moment, not comfortable with approving the budget. I can say that as far as the general funds are concerned and the GAN limit, I think I'm comfortable with that and I've had enough information. City manager said it can come back and be tweaked here and there. The central garage, that is in with, in the general fund, am I correct? Or is that in?
It's an internal service fund, so it's a separate line item within the resolution.
Okay, so if the general fund is approved, would that also approve that as well?
No.
Okay. So, just as some of my personal thought, I'm comfortable with the GAN limit, I'm comfortable with the general fund moving forward with the suggestion the city manager had on the hose. But as far as the enterprise funds, I can't go ahead and vote for that. I'm not comfortable at this point without the information to be able to review and having that time to go through that process.
Excuse me, just a second, if I could consult with the city attorney. So, do we technically have to have, in order for Kim to pay bills, we have to have the authorization, so typically what we do is have a spending resolution.
Right.
Can we ask them to adopt such a thing that they tell me how?
I suppose they could do it by motion. Bring it back on the calendar as resolution next time.
But it's not, it's not one by that, that's why.
Okay, let me think about it for a minute.
Typically, what we would do is, we would have a separate type of a resolution, informally referred to as a spending resolution, that allows, provides a limited appropriation that allows expenditures to be made past the end of the fiscal year, beginning July 1. Your next meeting is not until July 9th, so I've asked the city attorney to ponder for a moment how we might assure the continuity of services in the enterprise if the city council determined not to approve the budget.
And to the chair, I appreciate that, and I think there was one other time in my tenure up here that we did do that, where the enterprise had continued on, it was brought back up in two weeks. And it's, not to not appreciate all the work that staff's done, it's just, I'm just, I need to feel comfortable, but I also need to be comfortable when I get questions from residents and I need to have some of those, the background and the information to be able to do that, so I appreciate that.
Sure, we certainly understand.
Any questions? Okay, we're looking for the adoption of two resolutions. Someone like to introduce those?
Well, are we separating out the enterprise fund then, so that we wait for two weeks to get the information? Is that...
City attorney?
Well, the only problem is that there isn't a continuing resolution on the agenda tonight for payment of expenditures from the enterprise funds.
Can I, can I ask this question? If we, if three of us vote for it and approve it, since there's only four of us here, is that enough, because it's a resolution?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and then, I want to be sensitive to what councilman Medina is saying, and I can understand totally needing to know the information. So if we approve it, can it come back in two weeks anyway with further information and tweak it at that time?
Right, absolutely.
So, if we, I mean, you can, obviously, we don't know, but if we, yeah, you know what I mean. But, so if we, if we vote for it and it goes forward, then it's not a done deal, we'll just come back and have more information?
Yeah, and I, I think that that's, that was envisioned in staff's acknowledgement that there were questions that have not been answered. We certainly understand. I think your best action at this point would be to do as you're suggesting, with direction that the enterprise fund budgets and the internal service fund budgets, all but the general fund, be brought back at your next meeting on July 9th for further review and consideration.
Yes. So, with that in mind, I'd like to introduce, can I introduce both resolutions at the same time?
Does she make separate motions on those, please?
Okay, I'll introduce the general fund, enterprise fund, oh no, yes, internal service funds and special revenue funds budget resolution.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
No.
Okay, and then I'll introduce the resolution regarding the GAN initiative, a GAN limit.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item number nine, public comment, and item's not on this agenda. The council's policy to refer matters raised in this form to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendized pursuant to state law. Would someone like to address the council? Mr. Rico?
Honorable mayor, city council, city staff and residents, as you're appointed representative to the Sematell County Mosquito and Vector Control District, I want to bring you up to date on a couple of happenings relative to mosquitoes and West Nile virus in and around San Bruno. One, a positive, a bird tested positive for West Nile virus recently in the city of San Mateo. Two, there's a new species of mosquito beginning to appear in California that could carry yellow fever. It has shown up in the Center Valley, but not yet in the Bay Area. Our district is aware of it and is taking additional steps to trap and test for it, and if found, will take all necessary steps to treat accordingly. Number three, Tuesday, July 2nd will be the first of the district's scheduled for helicopter treatments over Mills Field, where bacteria-treated pellets will be dropped and then forced with the helicopter downdraft down through the dense tulies into the water to where possible mosquito larvae could be breeding. The bacteria used is mosquito larvae-specific and will not adversely affect other animals. Fourth, the district reminds our residents and park visitors to report all what appear to be freshly killed birds and squirrels to the state West Nile virus hotline, which is 1-877, and the initials West Nile Virus B-I-R-D, W-N-V-B-I-R-D. The district also reminds everyone to continue to dump off standing water so that there are fewer possible locations where mosquitoes may breed. Questions or concerns about how the district is working to prevent mosquito breeding and to curtail the possible spread of West Nile virus can be obtained by contacting district manager Robert Gay at 650-344-8592. And as your representative, I'm available to assist you in getting your concerns appropriately handled. And on this matter, thank you for your, the time for your short, for this short presentation. And flipping my hat real quickly, speaking for the chamber, our farmers market has started Sundays, 10 to 2 on Sematell Avenue between Genovin and Sullivan and Sylvan, and this runs through November. In July, hopefully, we will have the Mother's Club, Educational Foundation, 4-H, and Girl Scouts participating. And later in the year, we are trying to finalize a legislative day where hopefully we will have U.S. Representative Jackie Speer, Assemblyman Jerry Hill, Senator Jerry Hill, Assemblyman Mullins, Supervisor Pine, and lastly, our very own mayor... Mullins, Supervisor Pine, and lastly, our very own Mayor Ruane, to kind of do what Jerry Hill does, meet one-on-one with the shoppers and listen to their complaints, answer their questions. And with that, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you again for representing us so very well. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, item 10, conduct of business, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Rainey Planning and Management, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $33,920 for environmental review of the proposed San Francisco Police Credit Union office building at 1250 Grundy Lane.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, I'm David Woolterain, your community development director. I'd like to start my presentation by providing some brief background on this agenda item. The city has received and deemed complete for processing an application from the San Francisco Police Credit Union for planning approvals to construct a new headquarters' office building within the Bay Hill Business Park. The proposed location for this building is the site of the former and now vacant TGIF restaurant at 1250 Grundy Lane in the Bay Hill Park. Immediately to the north of this site is Highway 380, and the surrounding land uses are all office uses. The applicant has indicated that the credit union needs additional space because of growing membership and also a desire to provide a broader range of services. The proposed building will be about 66,800 square feet in size, it'll be three stories in height, it'll have two levels of subterranean parking, plus some additional surface parking. There'll be about 202 parking spaces total on the site. This new facility will house all of the operational and administrative service functions that support the branch network for the credit union. In addition, there'll be a small retail credit union facility for members-only on-site. They anticipate that there will be up to about 167 employees at the facility. The actual formal public hearing process for this application has not yet begun, it's still early in the process, but this item will go before the Architecture Review Committee, the Planning Commission, and the city council. A project like this does require full environmental review, and that's required by the California Environmental Quality Act and also the San Bruno Municipal Code. In a situation like this, as we receive an application, we deem it complete and determine that an environmental review is required, we typically prepare, as we did in this case, a request for proposals and send it out to qualified environmental consulting firms and receive their proposals. We did that in this case, and we received three proposals. We received proposals from ESA, LSA, and Rainey Planning and Management. All the proposals had similar scopes of work, the cost proposals received, though, were different. The Rainey cost proposal came in at $33,290, ESA's at $41,315, about $8,000 higher, and LSA's at $47,240, about $14,000 higher than the Rainey proposal. Rainey Planning and Management has extensive experience in similar work. Rainey's overall timeframe for completing the project was about four months, which is less, a little bit less than the other two consulting firms that proposed on this project. Based on our review of the proposal, staff is recommending to the city council that you select Rainey Planning and Management to prepare the environmental review for the San Francisco Police Credit Union project. And accordingly, we've prepared and attached to your staff report a resolution that we're recommending that you adopt this evening, that authorizes the city manager to execute a consultant services agreement in an amount not to exceed $33,290 with Rainey Planning and Management for environmental review for the proposed San Francisco Police Credit Union office building at 1250 Grundy Lane. I should point out that we're anticipating that this project will involve an initial study, an environmental initial study, and a mitigated negative declaration. But as is typical and standard, an initial study would be prepared first, and it could be, we don't expect this, but it could be that a higher level, a full EIR, environmental impact report, could be required. If that would be the case, there would be a need to come back and amend this contract. We are, though, anticipating that this would be a standard initial study and mitigated negative declaration. In terms of fiscal impact on the city, we do not anticipate any fiscal impact on the city. All costs will be the responsibility of the applicant. That concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Any questions for David? Action by the council?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Item 10B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with RMC Water and Environment in an amount not to exceed $77,970 for analysis and incorporation of additional CCTV data in the sewer master plan for a total contract amount not to exceed $387,390.
Honorable mayor, councilmember, good evening. I have with me Wing Wong, who is the project manager for the sewer, for the update of the sewer system master plan, and he will help me with any question what you might have on his project. The city's response, the city provides sewer collection and discharge services to our residents. As such, is the city responsible for proper management of the system. In order for us to manage our sewer system in the most effective way possible, the city took on two projects, two major projects, in two different timeframe, and those two projects follow somehow two parallel paths. The first big project was started in early 2008, the condition assessment of our system. The total budget for this project was 1.4 million, and the intent and the scope of this project was to inspect using video cameras the whole system, and to assess the condition of the system, and to establish the deficiencies of the system. The second project, this project now was completed, and still about 100,000 is left from the budget of this project. The second big project was updating our sewer system master plan. The work started early 2011, you approved the contract in December 2010, and then the work on the update of the sewer system master plan started in early 2011. The purpose of updating our sewer system master plan, the master plan is a planning document assessing the need of the system, making recommendation how to address those needs, and recommending priorities for those needs. The sewer, the updated sewer system master plan is in a final draft form, is ready in the existing form for the, for further consideration by you. When the sewer system master plan was developed, 40% of the inspection result, video inspection result, was available for their inclusion in the updated sewer master plan. Based on that 40% information available, they made the recommendation for corrective action for those deficiency, and using extrapolation, they extrapolated for the whole system the need. This is a very acceptable methodology for the master plan development and for this planning document. Since then, our video inspection project and the condition assessment project reached its conclusion, and now the information is available for the whole system. Reason why is timely to make specific assessment of the deficiency on the remaining of the 60% of the system, and to recommend the specific corrective action, like intensive maintenance, depending on the deficiency itself, spot repair, rehabilitation, replacement, whatever the best appropriate means of addressing those deficiencies. The city asked RMC, who was, who updated our sewer system master plan, to give us a proposal for, for the recommendation to review the deficiencies and to make recommendation for corrective action. RMC provided us with a proposal of $43,000 to make those specific recommendation for corrective action, and additional $34,000 to include that information in the draft, still draft updated sewer system master plan. In this case, the city will have a more precise, accurate document for your consideration and review when the final draft will come back to you for your consideration. Reason why is our recommendation to amend our contract with RMC for a total of $77,000 for making those recommendation and inclusion in our updated sewer system master plan. If you will support the recommendation tonight, then in two, three months, the department will be able to come back with the final draft updated sewer system master plan for your consideration and approval. This will conclude my presentation, and if you have any additional question, Wing and myself will be available for any answer.
Questions of staff?
To the chair, just so that I understand, this organ, this agency is videoing the lines, providing us DVD, and analyzes what course of action or an action plan, or deficiencies or areas that need to be repaired, and then they put together a document for, I'll just call it an action plan again, as far as what courses of action we should take as a city? So are they doing all of that?
The proposal including all of those DVDs and that information, what deficiency is in the system, is already available for the whole system. RMC now would just, and they did exactly what you just said, for the 40% of the system. They will take the remaining 60% of that information, and they will review that information, and they will make specific recommendation for corrective action, and they will replace in the main document of the draft sewer master plan, the extrapolated recommendation with the specific recommendation, making that more precise.
Okay, so, okay, so what I have heard is that they're taking the data, they're putting it together, they're analyzing it, they're getting the draft document together, they're giving it to staff, staff's then going to forward it to the council, and it gives us the ability to now see what we have. They've done all the analytical work, all the videoing and reviewing and recommendations and the analytical aspect, and then that'll come forward. Is that fair? I just want to make sure I was hearing right. Okay, city manager says yes. Thank you. Okay, and then you're feeling that in two to three months, they should be done with that part, because I know when we were videoing last time, we kind of had to meet a deadline, and, you know, it was met more or less, but we had to kind of do double time to get that accomplished. But about two to three months, we feel that that would be done, and it would complete this from A to Z, and have this document now, the most current update with all the analysis necessary, and we're done with this for now.
You are absolutely correct, councilmember.
Thank you, Clara.
I ring.
Thank you. Is there a mechanism in place, or will there be a mechanism in place as we make repairs to different pieces of it, to incorporate the new information into the, what will be the existing master plan?
The master plan, you say planning document, how I said, which will be updated, our last master plan was developed in 2001, that after 10 years, our master plan was updated. Typically, in the industry, can be updated each five year or each 10 years. I will make one important comment, that the video inspection and the condition assessment of our system, it is an ongoing operational and maintenance activity. And based on the new video inspection information, that new information will be used to take action and to address the deficiency, like doing the spot repair, or intensive maintenance, root control, or hot spot cleaning on our system. But those additional information will not be included in the master plan. The master plan will be a final document, but still, this inspection will be an ongoing effort, operational and maintenance effort, and the video is a tool, how you are inspecting our system, but like with any other infrastructure, or you need that ongoing inspection and then action.
Okay, thank you. I asked the question incorrectly, and you answered the question I asked, which was very well done, but not really what I was, wanted to know. This is the very first time in my memory, which is not what it used to be, that we videoed the whole system. Is that correct? Okay. So as we fix pieces, are we going to add to the existing video library, so to speak, or data, to make sure that we keep that as up-to-date as possible as staff changes, as things change, so that people don't have to keep going back and going, well, did we do this? Did we not do this? Is it, is it going to be some kind of mechanism, or maybe it doesn't exist, I don't know, that they'll have that available to people?
Absolutely.
Okay.
The plan was from the beginning that the video inspection can be loaded to GIS, is tied to GIS, and also can be tied and will be tied with the CMMS. And basically, you can look at any location in our system, and the CMS should include the most updated information inspection result for that section of sewer.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
Anyone else? Action on this item?
To the chair? Actually, I have a question. Thank you. When we initially wrote the contract for the video inspection, that was written to address only whatever video had been taken to that point? Or was it based on, I'm wondering, did we write a contract that actually said, we're only gonna, we're only gonna inspect 40% of the video that we take? Or was it intended initially that the contract would cover all video that was gonna be available?
The contract for, was for, the intent was of the contract to cover the whole system. If you recall that I, the department came back last year, late spring, to amend that contract to include an additional 22 mile, that was a miscalculation in the beginning of the contract, and was amended the contract to include the of the contract, and was amended the contract to include the video inspection of the whole system. And that was completed and performed. Was only forty percent available of already certified information, quality reviewed and all of the information available for the consultant of the update of the sewer master plan at the time, when they reached that stage in the development of the sewer system master plan, to use only just forty percent of that information. But now is available the one hundred percent.
So I think the question is, the contract with RMC, is that contract with, the expectation that they review a hundred percent or forty percent?
I think I needed some help, and I got some help, and hopefully you will have the right answer now. RMC contract, the contract for the sewer system master plan included in the initial scope of that contract was included to use the interpretation of the twenty-five percent of the system information and to extrapolate seventy-five percent of it. But at that time, was already the city video inspection project, which was a different one, was already a little bit more advanced, and they were, they were able at that time to include forty percent instead of twenty-five percent, and just to extrapolate the sixty percent of it.
Okay. And I guess I was confused, because in the discussion, it does say that they're going to, part of the scope is for them to make the recommendations based on that new sixty percent. So when you answered Mr. Medina's question, it sounded like all the analysis was done, yet in this discussion, it says part of this seventy-seven thousand is going toward the analysis of the data. So I'm confused. Is it done or isn't it?
Will, how I understood, councilmember Medina question, that when this will be done, then everything will be done. And that's, at least I tried to answer, but with this sixty percent additional work to review those deficiencies and to make specific recommendation how to fix that for the sixty percent of the system, then will be done as part of this contract, and then will be done for the one hundred percent of the system.
Okay. So if we were to just forget about the master plan for now and just say, we've got this video data, we would still need to analyze that data?
Absolutely. You are correct.
So roughly half of what we're doing is to complete the analysis of our new video data. The other half is to incorporate into the master plan.
You are absolutely correct.
Okay. Now, based on the assumptions, the extrapolation that was done initially, what do we know about the quality of, of those estimates? Is the initial forty percent based on the worst condition pipes in the city? Or was that forty percent just taken at random in different neighborhoods?
The first forty percent included worst portion of our system, and everybody felt very comfortable with the extrapolation and the quality result of that extrapolation at that time, and this is a very typical practice for master plan development.
Okay. So we could feel pretty comfortable that our current draft plan is still going to be a pretty solid plan, and that the incremental data would make it better, no doubt, but probably incrementally, and maybe only a small increment better than it currently stands?
Our draft master plan is valid and has a substantiated document, and this additional, more precise information will increase the value, making it more accurate and more up to date and more correct. This is a opportunity action on our part. If, let's say, the master plan would have been already approved and finalized, probably the department would not come back to you with this action. But not having that finalized yet and approved by you would be a missed opportunity on our part, not to give you that opportunity to set the expectation for a higher quality finalized document.
Okay. So we have to define, figure out if that increment is, is worth the, the extra seventy-seven thousand? Do we get that much more value out of it? Okay.
Could I clarify for just one moment, that the incremental value is the thirty thousand dollars? Because you're going to do the analysis anyway, and some amount would need to be spent on that, and we would estimate plus or minus the forty-three thousand dollars that's currently proposed.
And that's a great segue into my last question, which is, do we anticipate that at any point in the future, we will become self-sufficient in the analysis of sewer video?
It is, or will be, will be your final decision how to manage this in long term. The department, considering a transition period, how was discussed previously, this was the first time in the city's history when all of our system was video inspected. This year, the department entered in, and you already saw the line item in our operating budget, a new item for video inspection services provided by a private contractor. This will be a limited service. Most of the agencies are trying to develop that capability themselves. This is a ongoing need to be able to properly manage the system. Was included, a few years ago, a video inspection equipment in our CIP, the department pushed all way a little bit further out until we'll develop a more comfortable plan, depending on, it's a huge learning curve in the organization to really improve the skills of, of our employee to reach that level. In meantime, the industry is changing, and they are much less sophisticated video equipment, and will be our intent to come back in a year or so with some alternative recommendation for your consideration. How this ongoing need to inspect and to incorporate our inspection methodology in our management of the system will be handled.
Okay. Thank you.
To the chair, just, just so I'm clear too, is, as far as us being self-sufficient in analyzing, collecting, proposing an action plan, what I'm hearing you say in the end was, not now, and maybe in a year or two, you might come back, but it's technical, it's that staff that we currently have, or our managers or whatever, are not skilled at this point in which to do that, so as councilmember Salazar said, to be independent at this time.
Maybe I would just add some additional clarification, not just necessarily not skilled, but also it's a matter of efficiency and time, how long time in the beginning during that learning curve would take to take, to do the same thing, and how much time would take from our own employee.
Yeah, and I want to clarify, when I say skilled, I'm not saying that they're not capable. I'm just saying that you're not trained. If you've never done it, and you, then you're not skilled with that, not that you weren't me down there, but I'm just saying. So I just want to clarify what, what I meant by that. We just don't have the staff at this point. Okay.
Okay. Any questions or action?
I'll introduce the resolution.
Vice Mayor O'Connell.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Ruane.
Aye. Item ten C, receive report and direct staff to cancel the regular August thirteenth, two thousand thirteen city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, it has been historically the city council's practice to cancel one meeting in August in deference to a somewhat slower pace of business in the immediate after budget approval time period during the summer, and to provide a convenient means for city council members and others to take vacation, take time off without impacting the flow of city business. Typically, the city council has, or rather, historically has considered the second meeting, the second regular meeting in August for cancellation. We've, we've fluctuated that a little bit, and we've certainly, there have been years where a meeting has not been canceled. But in order to give you the opportunity to consider, staff is proposing to you that you consider cancellation of the August thirteenth meeting. That would be the first regular meeting in August, gives us a little bit of time to plan and manage the city's workload around potential cancellation. And has been, it has been suggested to me that in the last several years, school calendars have changed a bit, and that it is much more typical than perhaps it was historically for school to actually begin by the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-third of August, making the first, making it no longer Labor Day, that is officially the end of summer, but accelerating that a little bit into late August, and making perhaps for those families with children, school-aged children, to consider the first meeting as a convenient time for cancellation. It's completely up to the council, but we, we like to do this early for planning purposes and for public information purposes.
Rico?
I'm fine with that, and I know three years ago, I think we did the first meeting in August, so I'm fine.
Anybody else? Irene?
Fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got it. Eleven, report to commissions, boards, and committees. We don't have any this evening. Twelve, I'm sorry, Mr. Rico?
Just under committees, as the current committee chair for the crime prevention, is there any update you could give our committee and potentially the others that have vacancies on when you may try and schedule interviews and hopefully filling our three vacancies? Thank you.
Carol?
I have four applicants. So at your discretion, I'll be glad to set up, we can set up interviews if you would like to do the four. We have three vacancies.
If it's okay, Mr. American, we get that done at the next meeting?
The next meeting.
Please.
Okay.
Done.
Great. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Robert. Commissions, boards, and committees, comments from council members? Anyone? Item thirteen, we'll be going into closed session. Conference of real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five four nine five six A. Property is a property address of one oh five Cabrillo Way. Agency negotiator, city manager, negotiating party, city of San Bruno, under negotiation price and terms of payment. This meeting will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting right here, July ninth. And please, everyone have a very, very safe Fourth of July. Meeting adjourned.